Trans Day of Visibility State.
Yeah, thank you. I put this on the agenda, asked to have it put on the agenda. So I'll just go ahead and read it and then we can. It was meant for a discussion. So the Johnson County Board of Supervisors recognizes that transgender rights are human rights. The board believes in the importance of celebrating the lives of transgender people and in two thousand and twenty-three issued a proclamation of support for Transgender Day of Visibility. This year, the board is taking a different path. Instead of releasing a proclamation, we are recognizing the direct harm that transgender residents are experiencing in our county and creating a pathway for collaborative action. We would like to extend an opportunity to the transgender community to discuss how we can address harm and reduce barriers in our county. Working with two supervisors, the board invites transgender community members to work with us to co-create a list of actionable solutions to present to the full board by June first, two thousand and twenty-four. This date will give us ample time to generate solutions and coincides with the beginning of LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Pride Month celebrates a revolution begun at Stonewall in New York City in June of nineteen sixty-nine. Transgender women of color actively resisted state violence then, and we inherit their struggle today. The following is a preliminary list of priority areas we would like to focus on. Enacting policies to ensure people are addressed by their chosen name and pronouns in county services and facilities. Designating Johnson County as a safe place for gender expansive people. Increasing resources allocated to gender inclusive housing. Providing funding to direct organi- direct aid organizations like Iowa Trans Mutual Aid. Supporting access and distribution of gender inclusive books and other media that is restricted in public schools. Ensuring our inclusive economic development efforts include support for LGBTQ plus businesses. Promoting civic engagement and political participation by gender expansive youth. We encourage all residents to honor Transgender Day of Visibility on March thirty-first. And we ask everyone in Johnson County to use their voices and exercise their power by taking actions that protect our trans community. We endeavor to lead by example. So just some context for this draft. So as I've just read, it does create basically a like a working group so that we can work with our transgender community members. Obviously, there's kind of a date. And then I was hoping we could discuss, you know, some of the drafted area, priority areas. So some of this has come from people that have come before us and asked, you know, what about housing? What about safety? And so that's where these ideas came from. It's certainly not everything. But I think for a working group, it would be good to have some parameters. And and then leave it to the group, of course, to bring back recommendations and you know, working with, you know, the school district or working with, you know, other entities to bring in that expertise. If we're looking at trying to provide, you know, gender inclusive books or something like that, we should probably have a school district involved. You know, just to help navigate that or ask the right questions, those kinds of things. So this really meant to be a generative discussion and get, you know, some thoughts from my colleagues. And then it, once we make some changes and adjustments, there is a placeholder for this in tomorrow's formal meeting to sort of kick things off. So that's the intent.
Well, I jotted down a lot of notes. I think kind of two different pieces to my, my thoughts on it. And one of them would be with regard to within the county as a workplace and government that I feel that we can address the the issues that surround transgender rights, which is in the first statement, are human rights. In the handbook, we, we have, starting on page sixty-one of the employee handbook, the respectful work environment. And that would seem to me the appropriate placement of anything that we need to specify that is maybe not already inherent in what is there. So that would be my first part of the comment. The second part, a lot of things. I, I think, and I'm just gonna list them in the, you know, if you wanna talk about all that we can. When I see things like in the first paragraph where it says, we're recognizing the direct harm that transgender residents are experiencing. And while we can hear feedback from trans community about harms, I think that harm, I don't know that that is. I, I think there's a lack of clarity surrounding that word, I guess is what I'll say. And then going on into that where the bullet points are. The first one, enacting policies to ensure people are addressed by their chosen name and pronouns in county services and facilities. And there are a couple of things there. The first one is that I believe that in courts, you, and it's, it's a higher level, but I think that you are there's law surrounding of being addressed by your name, her name, or I'm, I'm not sure on that, but I, I just think that, that could be, it could be a problem. I'm not sure, but enacting policies, when I see that, I think about, so a policy then, you want it to have teeth after it's enacted. So what is the mechanism for, for ensuring that people are being addressed by their chosen name and their chosen pronouns? What is the reporting of violations of that? And then, and the houses enforced? What are the repercussions? And that's where I think we go back to the respectful workplace policy or, yeah, respectful workplace that's in our handbook that there's specific redress if there is what is perceived as a violation of one's sense of respectful work. Place. So I guess that's a long way of saying that maybe there's some redundancy here because to enact another policy that can be addressed within a policy that currently exists is So, and then, uh, let's see. When I look at I think you're I, what is gender inclusive housing? Everyone has gender. So what is gender inclusive housing? Again, I think that in an attempt to be inclusive, sometimes we can actually end up being more exclusive. You know, I go back to that person, that trans rights are human rights. And then I say gender inclusive housing. It's like, that might be a specifically defined term. And if it's not, then I think everybody, you know, as I said, we all have gender. So I, I see this as being so specific to, and, and, and the danger in that is it, it, you try to include everything. And it's so easy then, oh, later on, it's like, oh, we left this out and this out and this out. So sometimes it is helpful to be a little bit more generic and, you know, so those are, oh, and then, let's see. Where it says access and, oh, it's the third from the last bullet, supporting access and distribution of gender inclusive books and other media that are restricted in public schools. The separation of schools from our purview is one thing, but the other part of that is that, like, where would this distribution of books take place? What is the role of the county or the board in that? Would, and, and when we say supporting it, in what way, to what level of support? Are we talking financial support and securing the books? Are we talking support in the distribution of those? Is it both? Is it neither?
So, so Lisa, I felt like all the things you're asking are the things that this proposed, uh, did you call it a work group?
Yeah.
That this work group would flesh out because I think, I think the answers to all your questions is nobody knows because no, nothing's been proposed at all. I think these are just things that be put down as possibilities and maybe we could word this in such a way to make it clearer that, like, possibly including but not limited to, or something like that to just, that, you know, these things might be discussed, they might not be discussed, they might be acted on, they might not be acted on, but we'll come back with a specific list of things that then would have more meat on the bone.
And I, I think that probably, I mean, it, yes, I would agree with that because I know you have a lot of questions around, you know, we need to get into the, into the details of these things to really get those answers. And that is what the working group would be charged with. And I think that probably the thing that is sort of standing out to me most in terms of your remarks are questioning the use of the word harm.
Well, that's one of the things.
Right. I'm, I'm, I know. I'm just saying that, like, in terms of working in good faith with our transgender residents, I think that it is absolutely imperative that we recognize that direct harm is happening. And so I I, I want, I guess I, I, I want to make sure that we as a board are not questioning whether harm is happening, but in fact, fully behind investigating how we can, as, 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 as it says here, reduce, you know, address that harm and reduce those barriers. And so, I mean, in terms of the actual, you know, how that's carried out, I, I do think that a working group is probably best because I do think there are a lot of areas in which the county has purview or also has collaborations, has partnerships in our, in our community. And so it's, it's sort of drawing on that network. And, and so I, unless there's like actual issue with these sort of buckets. I think that that's kind of, you know, what Rod was saying about like to, you know, up to including the following. You know, I, I don't, I don't know if anything that you've said is necessarily taking these off the table because they're sort of investigative, like how would the county? But I, I do think it's imperative that we're on the same page in terms of, uh, that, that harm is happening.
Well, um, all right, so I think, so who determines that it's harm? That's one thing. Without that being, on the one hand, a lot of things can fall into harm. If you look at maybe the first bullet point and not being addressed by a chosen name and a pronoun. I think when I go back to like, say, the respectful workplace. There was, I don't know if it was specifically worried, but I think that the, it just was of intention to do harm. And that's a burden that might be hard to establish, but it also, you know, if someone called someone by the name that they saw on a paper and the person who was, has another chosen name felt harmed by that. But what was the intent of the person? They, A, may not have known the other day, they may, you know, they're trying to deform. There are so many things behind it. Was the intent to harm? And was there a knowledge that there was another name? And that they purposefully chose a different name. There, there's so many pieces of that. Yeah, but I mean, like, to, to put this out there and to put a lot of efforts into this when I think that some of those things are already addressed internally, not, not in the community, but internally. That we could add pieces to our respectful workplace for internally. Externally,
I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, this, this conversation is harmful. You know, I mean, the fact that
How is that harmful?
Because you're questioning whether harm is actually happening in our community or
No, I'm not questioning whether it's happening. I'm questioning like, how do we, how do we define it? And how do we then, like, when we're told that, I mean, like, there, there needs to be a determinant. You can't just say, well, I was harmed.
Well, maybe that's something the committee can give us advice on. I mean, I, I don't pretend to be an expert in that. But the committee probably would have some people who could help answer that question. And then we could come back to the board with, you know, here, here, here is what is meant by that. And then if you don't like it, we could change the language, you know, or adjust it however. I mean, I think it's a, we're talking about a working group. So I, and what I'm really getting at is I don't think we have to answer everything here and now. I think the whole idea is that the group would help with this.
I'll step in. Are we talking about a working group? Are we talking about a committee? Who would be on this committee?
It only identifies two supervisors and then asks.
What two supervisors is that?
That is, I suppose.
Okay. I know you talk about transgender and I truly I have to talk about the black people and the marginalized in my community. Why is it you're making this only for a chance? You, all this is about transgender people only? One subgroup. This to me is really, this, this, this is not right. Uh, black people in our community go through the same things. Marginalized, it's all kind of different things happening in our black community. And I don't understand how this becomes the county's problem. I mean, we could, as far as you, all this is about transgender, transgender, transgender. You've singled out transgender from everybody else. Why?
Because there's direct harm that's happening to the transgender community and it does not preclude any subcommittee being created for the black Americans in Johnson County. If you want to create that, let's create it. It's not to take away. It's in addition to, it's just shining a light on, is taking that moment. It doesn't, we have a, it, it's not a scarcity mindset here. It's actually something that's just trying to to focus. So if you want to create a subcommittee that's focused on black Iowans in Johnson County, I fully would support that.
This is amazing. After just in October, we just, I mean, just for the past couple of years, even you, Rod, I'm so disappointed that we were sitting here and you're talking about people being harmed. We, me personally, I was harmed. I served on this board. I was harmed. Yet, Rod, you said nothing. You stood up for nothing. Nobody did anything. When we were called coons, the black leaders in our community, called coons and niggers. And you talked to me one-on-one and you told me how you felt, but for you to sit up and talk about a working group and a committee and people were being aimed at, targeted, we were targeted.
And that absolutely would support creating a group that would, that would investigate some of the ways in which we can do similar work.
But I don't think.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that. It wasn't, nobody.
Please stop. Please stop, Rod. You need to. You should stop because you, what you, what you're doing now and what I've seen in the past, you haven't done it. You didn't support us. We as black people in this community, you did not. And you say Oval is your friend. And Oval was hurt by what happened. So we've experienced, I've experienced harm myself. And I never expected anybody from Johnson County to come up with subcommittees or whatever. All I wanted was support.
But we should, why shouldn't we?
Oh, what, oh, why not? Now you want to come up with something?
We've done this before.
What you've done?
We did the very similar thing where we had long conversations with uh, both, I think, I can think of two times where we did this, where we had groups, ad hoc groups that were created. One started working with uh, Sudanese immigrants and one started working with Spanish-speaking immigrants. Uh, held both at the Center for Worker Justice and came away with certain things that could become actionable, one of which turned into our community ID program. So it's not like everything that they talked about what became codified, but there was an idea that came out of it that, that you know, got some legs and turned into what I think is a good thing. So I, I, I guess I agree with you. I don't see why having one means you can't have two.
There's more, always more work to do. And so this is just asking for a focus. And if there was other groups that want to be created, I would love to be a part of that, to help support that. There's all, there, there's more harm in our community that we can certainly address. This is just simply asking for a focus. And, and then I outlined some of the things that have been requested from the community. And obviously, we live in the state of Iowa and there have been, you know, over fifty bills introduced in the state in the last two years. And directly harming youth, directly, you know, impacting families.
Twenty years ago, we did a group, uh, because there were, we felt there was a need for seniors. And we got the Johnson County Little People Community uh, program specifically to address senior issues that grew out of a task force. I mean, I think this has happened a lot of times.
All right, so the intent here is to get this working group, this is also a working document with suggestions. But by my very questioning of like, that we need to be maybe a little bit more specific or, or determine how we just, you're saying I'm harming more by asking the question.
No, I was saying that.
I'm thinking, how am I harming just by asking a question that, for clarity, for, you know, like, how are we going to do that? Okay, so your comment was, well, that would be determined by the work group. Fine, but like, how, by my asking the question here, is that harmful? Is not to be harmful to you or to hurt anyone's feelings or to create more trauma in your lives? My question is, like, how do we decide?
What is?
Like, like, somebody coming forth says, not what is harm, yeah, I mean, like, because that could be very broad. But what is harm? And do we have a burden of, for example, and the example I gave was regarding addressing a person with their name or their pronoun. Or they're of choice. And that, you know, if someone misnames someone.
I mean, I'm.
Is there harm? Probably. Is there intent? That's, you know, like, there you go. That's the part I think that, and, and then I'm harming by asking that question.
Well, I think that my understanding of your question was very acutely questioning whether harm happens.
No. How do we define it? How do we know? Can we hear it? But then how, what, what determinants are there? Like, for there to be harm, that probably, that is probably happening. But the person doing the harming, was there intent to harm? Maybe the, the, the thing that needs to happen is more education.
Yeah, I mean.
The intent is key, I think.
Actually, actually, impact is key. So you can have all of the intent that you want. Because then, then, and then.
Education piece could take care of that.
Right. Well, and also I think that, so in, intent does not, often doesn't equal impact. And I think that when harm happens, what matters is how we deal with it. And so if you're able to address that harm, and this, so I'll just say that countywide, we're, we're talking about structural, right? But you, if you're giving a very personal example. And as a transgender person, I can say when people misgender me, which happens every day, when somebody says, oh, I'm so sorry, actually, you know, they, you know, whatever. That moment right there is addressing the harm, it's calling it out. When somebody does it and just completely continues to like, you know, use a wrong pronouns, you know, in, in the conversation, in the duration. Yeah, it feels harmful. I'm not necessarily asking that, like, you know, we go around policing that. I'm just, I'm just saying that we can agree that harm happens when that happens. And, you know, how do we address that structurally? And so that's where the policies come in. And I, and there has been some conversation, particularly when we talk about our Human Rights Ordinance and our, our handbook, as you mentioned. You know, do we have a dead naming policy? Do we have a dead naming policy? And this is where the education can come in. That is when you, um, use. Yeah, not everybody does. So if you are dead naming somebody, that is when you're using somebody who has, you know, transitioned or is choosing a different name, you're using, you're, you're using the previous name. And that's very specific to the transgender community. And when that happens, it, harm happens. And so what are, what can we do as a county to create policies that's like, you know, that that acknowledges that harm? And then, and then, like you said, what happens? What are, what are the repercussions? So some of those conversations have started, but there's the, we need, we need to have more of a structural conversation. So while these things, and I guess, I mean, if I'm being honest, that's why I feel harmed because we're making it very personal. But I don't, I don't actually, I want to recognize that that is where it stems from, but that as a county, our responsibility is actually at a very structural level, recognizing that when that happens, that is harm. And how do we, how do we, you know, preempt that from happening or how do we address that harm? And so I guess that's, that's really the purview of, of this statement. And you know, I can appreciate the, the, the question. And acknowledging that we need to really focus on the structural issues in the ways that the county allows those to happen, or sometimes even, you know, assists in that happening. And so where, where can we as the county uh, put our resources, our policies in place to address those things? So.
And I think this is why you would want a balance of people who have, who, who are county employees and then people who are not. Because there will be places where, for example, something with the school district where you say, well, we, we actually can't change that policy because that's a school district policy. And that's where education can take place both ways, I think, you know. Now we may want to help in some other way on that top that, but I'm just picking that one as an example. So I, I guess in my way of thinking, uh, Lisa, I, I, I think you're right. There's a million questions in the, tied up in this statement, but I don't think we want to try to answer them today. I think we want to try to just say, do we want to appoint this committee or not? And, and then we'll have to figure out if we've got, you know, county employees who are interested in how many, I mean, we'll have to determine how big we want it to be, that sort of stuff.
Yeah, and that's the other thing is like, you've got two supervisors and then invite the transgender community members like, you know.
Right. You know, I don't think you want fifty people on a committee, but you also probably don't want five, you know. So what's the magic number? I, I don't know. We can discuss.
Yeah. I know there are very active people in the trans community. I also want to make sure that we have representation from the youth. I think it's important to hear from our young people if possible.
It might make sense to see if somebody from the county attorney's office or, and or HR. Uh, so, you know, who could look at things from that perspective a little bit.
I was actually hoping, I know Nathan Peters is in the room and he's been working very closely on the Human Rights Ordinance. So that would be helpful to have that perspective.
So, and those are just ideas, but I guess the big question we need to know from the board right now is do we want to start creating said committee? Or not? So I'm in favor.
We knew that.
Well, I just need to make sure there's three people.
John and, and, and B.
Well, I'm asking.
So why ask me and Lisa? You already got three. I don't even know why you had to put this on the agenda. You should have just did it. Right now, what I'm thinking of is inclusivity. All of Johnson County. This has nothing to do with one set of people, transgender. It's inclusivity, diversity, equity. Y'all talk about that all the time, but you really don't understand what it means. There's no way. There's no way. I'm trying so hard. I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna shut up because my mouth gets me in trouble all the time. But I'm gonna speak my man and y'all know I'm gonna say what I gotta say, but this is bullshit. You can call it what you want to call it and you can say what you want and you can call it subcommittees and putting committees together, but this has nothing to do with us.
Well, who's us?
I do think it has everything to do with how we as leaders at the county are addressing harm in our community. And it doesn't have to be.
But you only address in one subcommittee, one, one subgroup of people. But you only address a one subcommittee, one, one subgroup of people.
Yeah.
Of the
And there's nothing
This right here is all about one subgroup of people.
Nothing wrong with that. What's to say tomorrow?
Wrong with this
Tomorrow, let's have another committee. Let's focus on something. It doesn't have
We have livable communities for seniors. We
There's
Nobody's thought about that.
I do, I do think that there needs to be addressed that this is not take away from anything. It really adds to.
And hold on. We're not, we're not actually taking public comment right now. And when we do, we'd need you to come up, give your name and and uh talk at a microphone. So let me just get through, um, I still need to know that there are three board members. Once I get that, I'll take just a couple of comments and then and then we'll come back, okay? So if you, if you don't mind waiting. So are there three supervisors or more who would like to uh create some kind of working group? I'm, I'm yes. So three, Lisa?
I should free.
Okay.
I'm I'm still, I think we would need to separate out and do things internally first before we go out and into the community, I think.
Oh, I see. You want something internal first?
Yeah. And the internal part would be um addressing some of these issues that were, you know, like some of these issues internally by adding a statement within our respective respectful workplace in the handbook.
We can add that.
Hmm.
I mean, we can add that. I mean, that's the whole point of this discussion. If there's something that you want, something we can add, you know, in terms of enacting policies. Or, you know, something like that. I mean, I'll add in here the workplace, um, what was it?
The respectful workplace. Um, and and I think that in order to think things change and what we think is inclusive today in one year will go, wow, we didn't include this and this and that. So I think that actually a a little bit more um a global type statements in the, in the respectful workplace section of the handbook would actually be more helpful than very specific things. Um, you know, I'm reminded of years ago, county convention and we were something that had previously been about family. And we were aware that legislatively, family had a very, and it was prior to um, the legalization of a marriage in Iowa. And family was very strictly defined. So we changed, we changed the wording and then we started making this list. And trying to be very inclusive in that list, it got longer and longer. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but what I'm saying is what we came up with then, after hours and hours and lots of input. If I look at it today, there were proofs that were excluded. There because um, I think maybe in general, everyone's getting a little bit more specific about kind of um self-definition and group definition and um, and so our intent was to be as self-inclusive. Looking back, guess what? Not so much. And that's why I think that if we were to take our a little bit more global in statements. Um, so for for that part that goes with the county, we think that we can put something in the that section of the handbook and be somewhat global about about it so that it's actually all encompassing. Because we're not specifying, by not specifying this umbrella term actually encompasses things that might emerge later.
What I think also what you're speaking to is the opportunity to review policies. And so I think that what also we could do is look at what the working group comes up with and then every year or two, go through and say, is that still current?
Well, actually, that's not what I was saying.
I'm just, I know, I was adding to it.
Yes.
That what, yeah.
And and um, I think the plan, um. You know, we have this on the agenda for tomorrow as well, right?
Yes.
To for like a vote.
Yes.
So um, one of the things I think we need to do is if the language, and and Lisa, from what I'm hearing you say, I'm wondering if that's some change to the following is a preliminary, a preliminary list of priority areas. We said, uh, you know, a preliminary list of priority areas we may or may not choose to focus on includes or something like that, so that it it doesn't, you know, lock us into anything on the list and it doesn't prohibit anything that's not on the list from coming up. Is that?
Well, I wonder
Well, actually, that's for the list, yes, but I think that um, at this point, I'm not supportive of a community-wide.
Okay, okay, um. John, you were gonna say something?
I am, I'm a yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, it sounds like we have three people who want to form the committee. Um. In terms of actually doing that, I guess I would say, uh, V, you took the lead on this. Maybe if you come back to the board with some um uh suggestions in terms of how big it would be. Who in the county would participate, that sort of thing. We can run that back by the board uh, in a week or so, have some
Yeah.
some specifics laid out. Does that sound reasonable? And then uh, I've been delaying letting you speak. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, please. Uh, like I said, if you could uh uh give your name and we've got a three minute time limit. We're trying to keep to, so.
Um, I'm Emma Collatrow. I was just curious because you had said like back in October, there was a lot of harm being done for black community. Has there been like working groups to help?
No ma'am, no ma'am. And I want suggestion to you didn't talk about it. No ma'am. Like, nothing.
Back in October.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, October, yes. And a year and a half ago with city council where it all started a half, a year and a half ago. Then it flared back up last October and not one time have anybody ever said anything, uh, not one time, not one person on this board. None.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sweetie. You're welcome.
That's fine.
You are welcome.
Thanks for asking.